And we do have listening devices available for anyone who would like to have those support issues. Go ahead and start.
Routine business, item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of January fifteenth.
We do have a correction to the minutes and that should be, and I'll read this just briefly, it's a motion by Kelly, seconded by Barth, to ban all petition gathering inside the county administration building. The motion by Barth, seconded by Kelly, was to defer this issue for one week, and that was a correction from last week's minutes. So we have a motion to approve the minutes, ask corrected.
Motion to approve, as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other comments? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of four hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-three cents.
Pay the bills.
Second the bills.
We have a motion and a second, any other additions or corrections? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, motion unanimous.
Item four are reports, the Register of D's official statement of revenue collected during December twenty-twelve, and the Minnehaw County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for December twenty-twelve. They have been received and are placed on file in the auditor's office. The next item is personnel, item A is routine action.
I'll move routine action, second.
We have a motion and a second for routine personnel action, is there any changes or corrections to those? Any comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, passes unanimously.
The next item are application for abatement. A is the city of Hartford, ID eight-three-two-zero-nine and eight-three-zero-three-zero, two thousand twelve, property taxes in the amount of three hundred and thirty dollars.
Good morning, Kyle.
Good morning, Commissioners, Kyle Halseth, Equalization Office. I guess initially there would be a correction on there, that record ID eight-three-two-zero-nine should be record ID eight-three-zero-two-nine. I might have given the wrong one, Tax Break. This is from the city of Hartford, they purchased some property in two thousand twelve, and they're requesting an abatement on that, three hundred and thirty dollars even.
Move approval.
Second.
Would you like, or can we do these all in one group, or do we have to do them individually?
We have one, I think, with an issue.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Just trying to be efficient this morning.
I'm trying to.
I know.
The second one is from the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks, record ID one-four-zero-six-three. This is for property they purchased for the new state park over by the city.
Since I interrupted, I don't believe we have an approval on the first one.
Vote.
Correct? I need a motion to approve.
We have a motion, we just need to vote.
We do have a motion? I didn't even hear that.
And a second.
And a second, okay. Now we need a vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I think we pass that unanimously. With the correction to the ID. Now, you can go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. The second one is for the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks, they purchased property outside the city of Brandon for their existing park. They're requesting an abatement in the amount of a hundred eighty-three dollars, eighty-five cents.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions? If not, we have a motion to approve item B. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimous.
Item C is from the city of Sioux Falls, this entails six parcels that the city has purchased in the year two thousand twelve. The abatements go anywhere from a dollar and thirty-four cents up to over a thousand dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Excuse me, we have a motion and a second to approve item C. Any questions of Kyle? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's unanimously approved.
Pam's not here.
Go ahead.
I don't see Pam, so I guess I get to wing it.
Okay. She was just here.
Yeah. The first one is, these are the elderly freeze assessments. Item D is for Laletta Bligh, we're recommending denial of the assessment freeze.
I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny item D. Any questions or comments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The same sign. Motion unanimous. Item E.
The next are for, I believe within these next four, there is another one in there we're recommending denial on. I don't have the paperwork. Pam has all of that. There she is.
Yeah, we already did your first one. Which we denied. Oh, that Laletta? Yeah. Okay. I would speak to it a little, it's the first time I've ever denied an abatement request. I'm pretty sympathetic, but just because you are not willing to get your stuff together and apply on time is not, in my opinion, a good excuse to then come in and ask for the abatement. We talked to this lady on the phone at least five or six times. We talked to other people that were helping her, and they still didn't get it in on time. And this isn't the first time she does this, so I'm not supportive of it.
Thank you, Pam.
Okay. And then the other abatements, for Milton Lathrop, Sharon Bar, Donald Branson, Eunice Loeb, for the amounts on the paper, are all supported. Apparently the city supported Laletta's too, otherwise it wouldn't have come to you, right?
No, they didn't.
Oh, they didn't support it either? Oh, I didn't know that, so, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question on one of these I'd like to ask.
I think we're still gonna have to go through these individually.
Those you can all do together.
Well, since he has a question, I think we'll do it individually.
And if I may, on the first one for Milton Lathrop, I believe this party had a nuisance that we cleaned up, and that assessment would be going on their property taxes, so I'm wondering if we go with the freeze, if that abates the charges that would otherwise be going to him.
It's my understanding it wouldn't, but I'm not a lawyer.
Well, we have legal advice.
I believe that is a separate issue, and that wouldn't affect.
Thank you.
This just is levy on the property.
I'd make a motion for all four of them then, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion for all four of the items E, F, G, and H listed. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All four would pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
Item seven are notices and requests. A is a notice from the Big Sioux Ducks Unlimited of intent to conduct a fundraising raffle to be held on February twenty-third, twenty thirteen, at the Crooks Community Center in Crooks, South Dakota. The second notice we received was from the city of Sioux Falls of a public meeting for downtown Sioux Falls rail yard redevelopment project at five-thirty PM, Thursday, January thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, at the Sioux Falls Convention Center, Exhibit Hall Two, one-one-zero-one Northwest Avenue in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And the last item is to authorize the county auditor to publish notice of a public progress hearing for Minnehaw County Workforce Training Expansion Project on behalf of Southeast Technical Institute, CDL's training program, at nine-fifteen AM, Tuesday, February fifth, two thousand
We do need a motion for item C to publish that notice. Are there any questions?
Move to authorize, oh, sorry. Second.
Mr. Kelly.
I just think we ought to have somebody there on the city, on downtown redevelopment thing, 'cause I think we, depending on where they go with that extra track, we could still be involved in that issue.
Does anybody plan to attend? I am planning to attend that meeting, so if there's other representation, that's fine. If we have three of us, we need to make sure.
Probably should just notice.
The Argus Leader's aware of that. So we have a motion to publish item number C and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
There are no planning and zoning notices. The next item is petition for compromise of lien, John Pekas.
Thank you, Cindy. This is on DPNO number one-one-one-eight-six, in the amount of three thousand four hundred three dollars and twenty-five cents. The applicant is currently requesting a release of the lien for public defender and court-appointed charges that have been incurred. He has made two recent payments of twenty-five dollars each. He is requesting a release of the lien in the full payment of one thousand seven hundred fourteen, which is approximately half of the lien. He lists assets of eighteen thousand dollars with liabilities of seven thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars. He currently is employed. He is incurring the primary part of these charges, starting as a juvenile back in nineteen eighty-two. He has been incarcerated in the state penitentiary for the last twenty-two years, nineteen eighty-nine through two thousand and ten. Of course, he claims that he never was made aware that he owed money for the representation, given the fact that he was a minor when he got involved with the system, that doesn't really surprise me. The applicant recognizes his responsibility for the debt, however, this amount was unknown until his release from prison. He wants to clear this debt and have a fresh start in the community. I did have an opportunity to go through the paperwork, and the twenty-two-year prison sentence, roughly, was due to escape when he was at, I believe it was McCrossan's Boys' Ranch. I'm not one to second-guess the judge, but I think this was a particularly harsh result. At first, when I read this, I thought it was actually a murder, but this was a walk away from McCrossan's Boys' Ranch. I think the sentence is unduly harsh, but I'm not the judge. I know the judge involved with the case, and I know after these events, he was never doing criminal sentencing again. So by whatever reason, he was only on civil docket. So I'm gonna support this, and I'm hoping to get a second, 'cause I do wanna speak to it.
I'll give a second.
We have a motion and a second. I would like to remind the audience and anybody that may be watching us that the petitioners on these compromises of liens do not have to identify themselves, they do not need to come to the microphone, and we will not refer to those individuals' names to keep their identities safe, if you will. So if that person would like to come or stand and make any conversation, we would be happy to hear from them, otherwise, Mr. Pekas.
Thank you. I don't know if he's here today or not, but I can say that obviously this individual has been released from prison, he is gainfully employed, he's trying to move forward. I do think that, given the fact that he has spent the majority of his life incarcerated, the concern I have is that with a three-thousand-dollar debt hanging over his head, obviously the term being institutionalized comes to mind, and I think it'd be very easy for a person like us to slip right back into what would be the institution that always takes everybody, and that's the prison system. So I think by giving this person just a helping hand, where he agrees to pay up to half of what was incurred, which we have established precedent that we'll take fifty cents on the dollar, this is one of those times where I think that this young lad who made a mistake at the time, a long time ago, we can extend a hand and help him move forward, and so that's my argument.
Thank you, John. Any other comments, Mr. Kelly?
Well, here again, we go with my lawyer deal, and I truly believe that if we accept this fifty percent rule that seems to be permeating here, that we're gonna end up, everything out there is fifty percent, and I don't think we want that. I still think that when he, the time he served at prison, right or wrong, was for the crime, and we're talking about the defense, providing the defense form during that, or for that crime. I'll vote against this, simply because I just, I think the money's owed, I don't care if he pays it at twenty-five dollars a month for the rest of his life, he's still got an obligation there, and I think it should be done.
Thank you. Other comments, Mr. Barth?
Well, I appreciate Dick's point, and I often vote with him on this, but, you know, when you consider the fact that the county is owed about fifty million dollars in these liens, I would be glad to settle for twenty-five million dollars just today, so I'm gonna support it at this time.
Thank you, no comments? Well, I have to say, the first time I read through this, I probably would not have supported it, 'cause I would, like John, thought it was someone who had been incarcerated for murder. I think it has a whole different perspective to me for somebody who just walked, excuse me, I'm sorry about my voice, just walked away from McCrossan's, I think that changed my attitude about the debt he's already paid to this community and to the society, and he's obviously been very productive, he's been employed for a little while, and I do agree in a little bit with Dick's philosophy, but I frankly think that fifty percent is something I could support. But I do think we need to take a roll call vote. So we have a motion and a second to accept restitution of full payment of one thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. If we could do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Pekas?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes. Motion passes four to one. We'll go to item B.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is on DPNO number two-nine-zero-three-nine, in the amount of two thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. The applicant currently is requesting a release of the lien, there's no real estate transaction associated with this request. She is requesting a compromise of lien for consideration of the eight hundred and forty dollars and forty cents that she's already made in payments. The total occurring that was originally imposed was three thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. The payments that she's made thus far is around twenty-six percent of the total assistance that she's made. She's made small payments over time, starting in two thousand and five, so it goes back a good seven to eight years. The applicant's county assistance has been for rent, medications, poor relief, as well as public defender representation. She had a court-appointed attorney for her niece back in two thousand and three, and that charge was actually in the amount of one thousand seventy dollars. She has been in court with this particular niece seventeen times in regards to maintaining custody of the children, and anyway, the judges have been working with her because of the fact that she has some stresses related to dealing with these particular children. Since two thousand, the applicant is raising her sister's children, so these are actually her nieces and nephews, not her own children, that have been placed with her. Since two thousand, she basically has three of her sister's children, ages six, nine, and twelve, that have been living with her. Unfortunately, when they were taken from their mother's care, they were, the mother went off to incarceration, and quite literally, they were dropped off at her doorstep in the middle of the night, and so she's been dealing with these children. Obviously, there are some attachment issues related to the loss, or the issues related to the mother, and so she's been dealing with the rebellious nature of, that children can have, and the judges have been working with her regarding this. But that doesn't mean that these charges are not accruing. Once again, the applicant currently is working with a banker, First Premier Bank, in the hopes of securing a car loan so she can return to school. Also, the bank is willing to help her minimize her debt as much as possible. Of course, that also involves raising of the children, and she's also incurring a lot of debt related to the children. She recently has paid off four credit cards with a simple loan from the bank, which obviously gets some of that interest, the high interest rate remitted down to a lower, more workable amount. She has been on social security disability since nineteen ninety-seven. She receives nine hundred and ten dollars in monthly benefits. Currently, she has a nineteen ninety-nine Kia Sportage, which she currently is her vehicle. Her liabilities are listed over twenty thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars in bank loans, credit card debt, attorney and hospital fees, as well as our county aid lien. Obviously, the applicant is hoping to move forward, as well as raise these children. She has some counselors that she is working with currently, they actually are giving her twenty-eight to thirty-two months to secure her objective, but of course, going to counselors, being on disability, she is, quite honestly, financially strapped. She is requesting that, with the payments that she's already made, that she go ahead and be allowed to not make any further payments after the twenty-six percent she's already paid, to help her move forward and return to school. So I'll make the motion, I don't know if I'll get a second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Anybody have any questions or comments? I do, but so does Dick. Commissioner Barth?
I just wanna say that this party has made eighteen payments, and the original bill started in nineteen ninety-two. It's a long time ago, but they've made eighteen payments between ten dollars and three hundred dollars, and I appreciate that from a person who clearly isn't, you know, rolling in dough.
Commissioner Kelly?
I'm a little curious of why, if these children are in foster care, the state would be paying the foster care family, I believe, with their mother incarcerated, I guess I don't understand why this woman is not getting some support for taking care of those children. John, have you got any insight into that?
Yeah, she is getting support, and what's interesting is that what they'll do is, Department of Social Services, rather than going to foster care, they will originally check to see if there's a family placement they can do that would be acceptable, and so they actually do a mini home study to make sure that would be an appropriate placement. Obviously, the Department of Social Services looked at this particular person and said, "We can place these children here." Amazingly, the courts have been working with her. Setting aside whatever her sister did, and looking at these children, obviously, there have been reoccurring issues related to the rebellious nature that children have, and unfortunately, she's trying to deal with that. I do believe she's getting foster care payments, but once again, that don't, she's currently on disability, so you're not gonna get rich on getting a check from foster care in some way.
No, not at first.
But, you know, with that being said, I do believe that the financials that she produced to us were accurate, so.
Any other comments or questions? If the applicant is here, again, she's not, I'll remind people that she does not need to come forward. We have a motion and a second to, I believe, erase the remaining debt.
Yes.
Back to zero.
Yep.
I think we should probably have a roll call vote, just in case.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pekas?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Now we have an opportunity for public comment, and that would pertain to anyone who would like to make any comments that are about items that are not on the agenda, so if you have other item that's not on the agenda, you may come forward, otherwise, the agenda items are listed, and you need to identify yourself, please.
Scott Erismann, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I wanted to comment on you guys' website, and the agendas being up there in timely matter, and the times. I went to your website the other day, I think it was on Friday, and it still has the meetings listed as eight-thirty in the morning, and that hasn't been since this summer. The agenda for this meeting was not up there yet, obviously Monday was a holiday, still wasn't up there. I know by law, probably, you're not required to have that stuff up on the website, but, you know, it's, a lot of people use the internet to get their information about agendas and stuff anymore. I was actually, went around with the city for about sixteen months with their online meetings. They kept denying something was wrong, and nothing was mattered, and finally, after a forty-five-minute conversation with the IT person, discovered that there was something wrong. I'm just hoping that the county doesn't go through that again. I know, I think the open meeting law is clear, it's twenty-four hours in advance before a meeting starts, and I would like to see the website, the county commission website, a little bit better than, you know, what it has been. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Ken, would you like to make some comments?
Yes, I discussed this issue with IT this morning. There was one location on our website that they did, in fact, make the change to nine o'clock, but there was, in one of the tabs, when you got deeper into it, it still did list an eight-thirty time period. That has now been changed, if you go into it. As far as the agendas, typically, I can't explain what happened this particular weekend, but we send those agendas over to IT on a Friday, when we've wrapped them up and completed, and they're typically posted on Fridays, and that, you know, if something happened this weekend because of the holiday, I was not aware of it. But typically, those are, in fact, posted on Fridays when we have the, when we finalize the agenda. In addition to that, and that in, for the new state law, to make those things accessible to the viewing public, we now post those agendas not only online, not only do we send them to the media, but we also post them on the front doors of this particular building, because this is the place where the meeting happens, so that people do have an opportunity to see the agendas. So other than this, possibly this first weekend, because of the holiday this past weekend, it's typically not an issue, but we did find a problem with the eight-thirty being posted on a tab that was deeper into the website, so.
Thank you. Hopefully, Scott, you'll watch that again, and if you see it, you obviously know where we're at.
Let us know.
Yeah, just don't send us an email, we may not get that.
Actually, I'm a county person, helping me out with it.
And I'd like to thank Pam, she was here.
She's still there.
Oh, there she is, for bringing that to our attention, too, because she sent me an email, I think, yesterday, that it was wrong, and that's the first time I've gotten an email in the two and a half years I've been here that noticed, frankly, there was a change in the website issue, so, but Scott, thanks for coming. Any other?
Yeah, just a comment, I agree with Scott that the internet is becoming more and more important. Maybe, you know, we get it because we're directed, but the public, I think, is looking to the internet to be their method of finding out. You do everything from looking up telephone numbers to meeting schedules, and I know the city's modified theirs recently, and if you run some deal, like my city or something, you get an email that tells you that it's posted, and so I think it's just important that we continue to watch that and make sure it's functioning very well, because it's a very important part of our process.
Thank you. I'd also publicly like to acknowledge Cindy for coming in this weekend, 'cause we all got emails from her yesterday on her day off, to correct minutes, and some other issues that, I see Mr. Litz isn't here, he doesn't wanna be identified with the problem, but now that we, everybody knows that he was the problem, he is owing you lunch, I'm sure, for at least that.
He did.
Okay, then we're okay. Any other opportunities of comment? Other than that, we'll go to item ten.
Item ten is a presentation of the South Dakota Community Foundation's Wealth Transfer Report. Bob Sutton.
Ken, can you get me into this? Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Bob Sutton, and for the ten years preceding December thirty-first, I served as the president of the South Dakota Community Foundation, and did a presentation in front of the CCOG Board recently on the transfer of wealth in South Dakota. Commissioner Barth was present there and asked if sometime I might have the opportunity to come and present this with you. So Ken gives me a call. Unbeknownst to Ken, at that time, I was no longer going to be at the foundation, but I kept my commitment, because I've known Ken since I had a full head of hair, and neither one of us had back surgery yet. That was a long, long time ago, Ken. As a matter of fact, twenty-one years ago this week, I took the position as the first executive director of the South Dakota Association of County Officials, at the ripe age of twenty-three, and wouldn't have gotten through it without Ken McFarland, so, thank you, Ken. I appreciate the chance to be here, and I'll actually direct your attention, I don't know if they're on your screens or up on that one, but, oh, you can see it somewhere, okay, great. This transfer of wealth analysis was put together several years ago, and then redone in two thousand and ten, based on the most recent census data for the state of South Dakota. When I took the position at the South Dakota Community Foundation, which, just for all of your information, would be very similar to what Candy Hansen does at the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation, and the good work that's done right here in and around. Area Community Foundation and the good work that's done right here in and around the Sioux Falls area, but for the rest of the state. So for the last 10 years, I have driven 50,000 to 55,000 miles a year covering virtually 64 or 63 of the counties across South Dakota, doing charitable and philanthropic work with local donors and nonprofit organizations. It's been great work and I thoroughly enjoyed it. But one thing, when I came on the board, or when I came into the position in 2003, the discussion took place, where do we want to be? At that time, we were a permanently endowed foundation of approximately $29 million. And the question was asked by me after I was offered the position of the board, where do we want to be? And they said, "Well, it's taken us 16 years to get to $29 million or roughly $30 million. We don't think it would be too bad to see if we couldn't get to $50 million by 2010." And I said, "Okay, I think that's a worthwhile goal." So we started raising money and going out and telling the story of the South Dakota Community Foundation. And, and by 2005, we hit $50 million. And I thought, "This is perfect. I'll go to the board and tell them that I can take the next five years off and we can just kind of relax and, and rest on our laurels." And like any good board, they said, "You misunderstood. We said we wanted to be $100 million by 2010." And I said, "All right. In order to do that, we're going to have to do a little bit of analysis in South Dakota of what kind of wealth is available out there. And what you see before you today is the result of that." We did this transfer of wealth analysis in 2005 based on 2000, just one second, I'll give this to advance. There we go. Based on 2,000 census numbers. Knowing that was a little bit flawed, we had to go with something. So we used 2,000 census numbers. And all of you, certainly as commissioners in South Dakota's largest populated county, know that the growth spurt, if you will, or population boom in South Dakota that's occurred in certain areas between even any one-year period, but certainly a five-year period is exorbitant. But it gave us a baseline upon which we could base what is out there. So we took a look at all sorts of different things. But when we're talking about wealth and the transfer of wealth, we look at a 50-year period. You look at wealth that will transfer from the World War II generation that unfortunately literally leaves us every single day, and there are fewer and fewer members of the World War II generation left, to the baby boomer generation and ultimately to generations X and Y. So over a 50-year period and typically two transfers of wealth. World War II to baby boomers, baby boomers to generations X and Y. And in South Dakota, we updated that in 2010 because the census numbers were so strong and the wealth, thanks in part to the incredible increases in ag land values in South Dakota, literally exploded. When I gave this presentation based on 2005 numbers, the transfer of wealth in South Dakota over the next 50 years was going to be $38 billion. So that's a B. 38 billion would transfer from one generation to the next to the next. 2010 census numbers, that number is $101 billion. And I want to share a little bit with you so I can tell you how we got to those numbers. You know, when we talk about the study, we take a look at what does it mean? When you look at current net worth and what the future transfer is going to be, and, and you take a look at those things, you really see that if we can transfer this wealth without it leaving the state of South Dakota. Minnehaha County doesn't have this issue to the degree that other counties do. But to be honest with you, the vast majority of wealth in South Dakota lies outside of city limits. It lies in equity, in the ground, farmland, ag land property, and many cases, businesses. But so many young rural residents don't come back home. You're the beneficiaries of much of that. They end up right here in Sioux Falls. But as a state, we end up losing them to Minneapolis, to Omaha, to Miami, Los Angeles, Phoenix, wherever they end up. And what happens is when that transfer of wealth of a family farm sells, whether it's in Montrose, whether it's in Garrettson or Del Rapids or, or outside of Brandon or anywhere in western South Dakota, that wealth leaves our state. And when that happens, we start seeing an economic impact if it continues to occur over time. So those are the important parts of the study. And then we started taking a look at what can we do? If we can capture this wealth and we can have people be philanthropic, just generally generous, if I can use that term, which South Dakotans are, I will tell you that South Dakotans generally leave approximately 15 percent of their wealth. That's the number that we use, 15 percent. The national average is closer to 5, but we leave 15 percent of our wealth for charitable purposes. Now charitable can mean a lot of different things. Churches, very high priority for most South Dakotans. But it can be the charity of your choice, whether it's organizations that are human service agencies, healthcare organizations, you name it. Across the state of South Dakota, we have lots of people that are very, very generous. And those are the organizations that will benefit ultimately from the generosity that's, that comes as a result of the transfer of wealth analysis. So when we look at intergenerational wealth, I just want to tell you, on a national level, between 2010 and 2060, $75 trillion will transfer from one generation to the next to the next. That averages $653,000 per household. And that's a big, big number. That would, 600 trillion or 75 trillion would probably solve most of Minnehaha's counties' financial issues for at least the next decade, Mr. Chairman. So we took a look at this and we said, "In South Dakota, what does that pare down to?" Well, 101 to 112 billion. We always use the 101. It's just, it's easier to be conservative and use the lower numbers. But that means, on average, on average over the next 50 years, $2 billion. Still a very big number. We're still talking about a state that has a state budget of $4 billion. $2 billion will transfer from one generation to the next each year over the next 50 years. So if you can get your head around that, that's the kind of numbers we're talking about. So what does this mean? We project lower transfer numbers, not because South Dakotans aren't more generous, but because South Dakota's economy does not grow at the rapid rate of other, other states most times. We may be an exception to that rule right now. But over time, South Dakota's enjoyed not the high peaks, but also not the deep valleys of changes in the national economy. And that's been one very nice steady factor for South Dakota as a whole. So we always project a little slower growth rates than the national average. But the bill, a billion dollars, if you could imagine that if we took 101 billion that transfers and just 20 percent of it each year, this obviously $20 billion, each 10 years, excuse me, each decade, if we could capture 5 percent of that, what could we go out and do to capture it? And I don't mean one organization. I mean the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation, healthcare organizations, universities, nonprofit organizations that do good work. If we capture 5 percent of that each decade, you're talking about a billion dollars, a billion-dollar endowment fund. And if you had a conservative payout rate of 4 percent, you'd have $40 million each year to support the organizations and the, the entities that we're talking about. Many organizations that all of you support through taxpayer dollars from time to time. If we could figure out a way to capture wealth and have those be more self-sustaining than they are today, it makes a difference for all of us in South Dakota. Ultimately, that means community betterment. It may mean better education. It may mean better lives for single mothers. It may mean better opportunities for kids that don't have opportunities for education today. The list is endless. And I think it's important to think, we're not talking about trying to capture 50 percent of this. 5 percent of the transfer each decade could result in a $1 billion endowment every 10 years. So just take a look at this, if you would. You have to take a look at what types of property we're talking, or what types of wealth we're talking about. Really, property, investments, and insurance. So I broke down for all of you just the property portion of that. Agriculture property today in billions is right about $20 billion, about $23.5 billion of residential property. And then all other properties, business and otherwise, are about $15 billion across the state of South Dakota. That's today, and that's wealth. But I also talk about net worth. And, Mr. Chairman, it's important to point out, not that any of you need this, but I always make this point, there is a significant difference between income and net worth. And people that have $850,000 houses and a BMW and an Escalade in the driveway and a rainbow playset in the backyard don't necessarily have any money. And I think that's important to point out. People's income is not indicative of their net worth. Net worth is you add up everything you got and you subtract everything you owe, and it's that magic little number at the bottom. And I tell you, I'm standing in front of the most urban county commission in the state of South Dakota, but the majority of wealth lies outside of city limits. The majority of net worth lies outside of city limits in equity and property. Now you have a significant amount of equity in real estate property, commercial property within, certainly within Sioux Falls as well. But if you want to look at folks where they've built up over a long period of time significant wealth, you look to rural areas in South Dakota. So levels of net worth certainly depend on income. It's really hard to have a really high net worth if you're at the federal poverty level in income. There's no question about that. A, young people don't have a lot of money. Historical populations, when you're in a population declining area, that's an economic, that leads to economic trends that don't favor high net worth. So if you take a look at the blue bar, current net worth, there's about $50 billion in net worth in South Dakota. In 10 years, approximately $10 billion, the first 10 years, about $10 billion of that will transfer. And then over 50 years, obviously, the $101 billion transfer occurs. Now I'll share with you some, our numbers about money that, that make it a little bit more graphic. Across South Dakota, there are 155,000 households that have, that have net worth of $0 to $75,000. Then you look at middle wealth, and you look at high wealth, and then you look at $1 million net worth. 13,400 households across the entire state, 4.3 percent of the population. Recently, there was an article written on a blog written in Pierre that talked about the fact that there are only, I think the number was something like 853 millionaires in South Dakota. Well, I had, I just couldn't help myself. As much as I wanted to not comment, I jumped on the blog and said, "That's, that's way off-base." That's the number of people who have incomes of $1 million a year. There's a difference between making $1 million a year and having a net worth of $1 million. So we, we make that very clear. You're talking about roughly 13,500 households in South Dakota that have net worths of over $1 million. So if you take a look at this, it goes back to the old adage. If you look at under 25 years old, under $50,000, 92 percent of them, the median net worth of 25-year-olds and younger is $9,300, a whopping 9,300. And it goes back to, I was a fundraiser for a lot of years. And if you, if your furniture consists primarily of concrete blocks and old Milwaukee cases, old Milwaukee long neck cases, and those are your, those are your side tables next to your chair, you likely don't have a lot of net worth. Now, as you go up and you can see, it climbs quite steadily until you get to that 55- to 64-year-old range. And, and that's where you're going to have your highest net worth. What happens after that? You start having to take care of yourself. You start have to have, have to take care of, you're, you're not producing income generally as much after that in your life. And you also have healthcare costs that start taking down what you have available as far as net worth. So they're just interesting numbers, and these are all South Dakota statistics. So take a look, approximately 20 percent of 55- to 64-year-olds in our state have a net worth of over $500,000. Now, this is the interesting stuff to me. When you take a look at property valuations across the state, congratulations, you all knew this, but Minnehaha County in property valuations, $10.7 billion. I may be off, you would all know much better than I, but these are the numbers from 2010. And you can go down Pennington, Lincoln, Brown, Lawrence. 44 percent of the state total property valuations are held in those five counties. Now take a look to the right column. Property valuation, Shannon, Buffalo, Todd, Zebok, and Dewey. All reservation counties, but Shannon County, by any official population estimate, 18,000 people. If you ask the people that live in Shannon County or spend any time in Pine Ridge or Kyle, they'll tell you on any given time period, that number could be 25,000 to 30,000 people live in Shannon County, somewhat transient population. But $25 million in property valuation. Million. You have, Ken, I may be off with this, but you have 15 individual properties in this county that have more property valuation than Shannon County has as an entire county. Much of the property is held in trust by the US government, so you keep that in consideration. But you're talking about trying to provide basic services in these counties based on property valuations of literally 25 to roughly $100 million. It's, it's somewhat shocking. And those five represent less than 1 percent of the total across the state. So when you look at the 44 percent versus the less than 1 percent, when you get together at county commission meetings, you will understand the woes of people trying to fix roads and bridges and do criminal justice in Zebok County when they've got a total property valuation base of $120 million. So then take a look at current net worth. You're almost double here in Minnehaha County, the next closest county in the state. $14 billion in net worth. And those five counties represent 56 percent of the state total. 56. Minnehaha, Pennington, Lincoln, Brown, and Brookings. By the way, Brookings has replaced Cottington as the fifth most wealthy, based on net worth, county in the state of South Dakota. I'll tell you, in two, based on 2,000 numbers, the top five counties accounted for less than 50 percent. So this, there's been over 6 percent growth in the percentage of the state total of net worth in those five counties. And I say this, the, the larger, continue to get larger, the wealthier get wealthier. That's the way it, you know, population centers are growing. And you look down that, literally, the I-29 corridor with a little bit of, of westerly flow over to, to Aberdeen, but the rest is I-29 corridor. Of course, you throw in Pennington County and the Black Hills. Bottom five counties. Buffalo County is, is Fort Thompson, just south and east of Pierre, where I live. $24 million total net worth. Now, you look at that and you say, "Boy, that's devastating. That's terrible." Or look at Harding County, an even better example, or Jones, both $72 million. Never mistake net worth necessarily for, a low net worth for people necessarily being poor. In Jones County, there are 1,003 people total. If you took an average, just an average of four people per household, it might be closer to three, but let's just use four. You're talking about 250 households. 250 households divided into $72 million means that per household, Jones County, for an old fundraiser like me, I'm going to spend a lot more time in Jones County than I am most times in Minnehaha County. Not because there's not wealth in Minnehaha County, but almost everyone that you touch in Jones County is going to be someone that has some significant net worth. So you take a look at that. If you divide 14.1 billion by a couple hundred thousand, 170,000, just think about the differences. Now, I'm not implying that there's not a significant amount of wealth in the, in the larger urban areas, but it's important to, to take a look, Jones, roughly 1,000 people. Harding County, roughly 1,200 people. When you divide that down to number of households, there are some significantly wealthy households. The wealthiest county in the state of South Dakota, Sully County, Oneida, South Dakota, just north and east of Pierre, very, very small number of residents, not quite as small as Jones and Harding, but large, large landowners who have owned land there for years and years and years. There's no debt, much, tons of equity, and that makes a big difference. So I'll just move on and tell you that population, income, and age, as we talked about, really drive what we're talking about here. When we talk about transfer of wealth, population, income, age, those are your three biggest drivers. And then I just wanted to point out to you that when you look at the economic regions, as I get ready to wrap up here, you look at the economic regions in South Dakota, we had to break it out some way. So to us, this made the most sense. We didn't want too many, we didn't want too few. So we kind of lumped together. There may be some significant differences between Hanson County, where Alexandria is, and certainly Ogallala over in Shannon County. But we were trying to lump this together for illustrative purposes. And you'll take a look, if you can, keep in mind these, roughly, these zones. Take a look at where, where you are, because I think it's important. We've always talked about the southeast corner of the state, certainly the I-29 corridor, but being the driver, if you will, the engine that pulls other parts of the state. I think it's important to point out, you take a look at these numbers right here. You're obviously southeast, but when you look at $25 billion of current net worth in the southeast part of the state, nearly $5 billion will transfer in the next 10 years, but $45 billion will transfer. Of that 101 billion, 45 billion of it is going to transfer from the counties right around Minnehaha County. Why is that important? Because it shows where the growth is going to be. Over the next 50 years, there is going to be more wealth here now than there, significantly more wealth here now than there is today. That means your economy's growing, that means your population's good, and that means your income levels are good. And that's- And that's how you, so, so you, you all members of the commission are working and operating in an environment that is the exception to most rules in South Dakota. I would tell you that 42 out of South Dakota's 66 counties go the other direction, meaning they will have less wealth to transfer in 50 years than they have wealth available to them now. If you try to really get your head around that, it's a somewhat scary proposition in many rural South Dakota communities. So, I, I just show you that South Dakota, actually, we always get shown these charts where we're so far behind everything else, but in the United States, the transfer of wealth will occur, it continually climbs. South Dakota climbs as well. We have a little bit higher transfer immediately because our population is slightly older than the country as a whole, and then it goes up at about the same rate over the next 50 years as the rest of the country. So, just to let you know, dividends, interest, rental income, all of those things, real property, asset holdings, all the things that go into the, this, it's important to point out, were the methodology that was used. But I think finally, the last slide is, there needs to be an effort at the local level to develop a strategy. A strategy to retain some of this wealth. As I said, we see people leave. We see people leave the state, and you think, "Those young people, we can't afford to lose them, but it's good they're going out and getting experience and things happening for them." And we hope they come back. And that's a lot of, there's a lot of initiatives, and you've been very successful in this part of the state of making that happen. But one of the issues that we run into is, if they're away, when their, when their, their parents or grandparents pass away, and they receive their inheritance, or their portion of the estate goes out of state, they're more likely to stay where they're at because now they have financial stability to continue to live there. So, it's just something we all have to kind of keep in mind. What kind of efforts can we take, and do we have an obligation as a state to make sure that we're not losing this wealth? Because, as I mentioned, if we can capture a very small percentage of it, $40 million every 10 years can make a significant dent in many of the things that we deal with in this state on a day-to-day basis. So, Mr. Commissioner, with that, I will, I will close. I brought just three handouts to give you, and I'll just pass them around, but I, I, we, we break this out on a county-by-county basis at the Community Foundation, and now that I'm gone, a, a young associate that's been hired, Buddy Signer, is here, and he's going to do this presentation. Over the past, oh, probably seven or eight years, I've done this 150 times, literally in county commissions and development corporations and service clubs in every county in South Dakota. So, we broke it out by county, and I'm just going to share these with you, I won't go through them, but it breaks down the net worth of, I brought for you Minnehaha, Lincoln, and Turner, because there is a significant difference between your neighbors to the south, literally right next to each other. You look at population growth and values and transfer values between Lincoln and Turner, side-by-side counties, you will see significant differences. So, Mr. Chairman, I will leave those at the front desk for you to take a look at sometime when you don't have anything else to do, and appreciate the time and be here today and would answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. We're glad that you're back in Sioux Falls after being gone a few years. Buddy, you have some big shoes to fill.
No, it is. Unfortunately.
Hopefully, you don't end up with the same hair problem he has.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions for Bob?
Bob, could, could you give us an electronic version of your PowerPoint?
It's already loaded right here on this machine, and so.
If you can, Ken, he'll distribute it to us.
You got it. You bet.
It's also on our website, Mr. Kelly.
Good point. It's also, all of this and all the county information is also on our website, but we've got the electronic version right here for you.
Very educational, and we thank you for coming this morning. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Other questions, by chance? No? Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll go to the next item.
Thanks very much.
Item 11 is consider a bid award for Project MC-50-194-059-1 Baltic Bridge Beam Procurement and authorize the chairman to sign contract with Gage Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $203,107.04. The bids open January 16th, 2013. D.J. Boothby.
Morning, D.J.
Morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. Pursuant to your authorization, on January 16th, we opened bids for the Baltic Bridge Beam Procurement Contract. We received two bids, which is what we expected. Gage Brothers, Redlow, on the bid opening for $203,107.04, and that was under our estimate of $250,000. We recommend awarding this project to Gage Brothers and request that the chairman sign and execute a contract for this work. If you have any questions, I can answer them at this time.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Mr. Barth.
So, we're replacing the steel I-beams with concrete beams?
That is correct.
Is that, they won't rust, right? So.
Well, actually, they, they could rust. The steel inside them could rust. However, that's unlikely, and, and they will be much less maintenance than the steel I-beams. It's a more efficient structural section, and so they are cheaper and they're quicker to make, and so it was very easy for us to decide to go the concrete section this time.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to accept the Gage Brothers bid.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? D.J., do you want to remind us of the time schedule and when you anticipate completion of this, since we've had some feedback on that?
We hope to begin construction in March and, and complete construction by June 30th, and that includes work that we will do on our own with our department to patch up some asphalt on both sides of the bridge, but we anticipate the, the completion date, total completion date to be about June 30th this year.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone in the audience? If not, we have a motion to approve the bid from Gage Brothers. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 12 is a briefing on the establishment of joint plating jurisdictional area by the city of Hartford with Minnehaha County. Pat Herman.
Morning, Pat.
Good morning. Pat Herman for Minnehaha County Planning, and this is just a briefing. It requires no action on your part. Currently, we have three areas where we have joint plating. That's with the city of Sioux Falls, the city of Brandon, and the city of Del Rapids. Hartford had decided that they would also like to extend their boundaries for plating purposes, and South Dakota Codified Law 11626 allows them to do that without input from the county. They took action just on January 15th and approved a resolution to establish this joint area. And what this means is, anyone that is splitting land within that area shown in blue on the screen is required to plat that and get signatures from both the city of Hartford and from Minnehaha County. This will be effective on February 13th of this year, and as I said, this doesn't take any action, this is just for your review that this has been established.
Any questions for Pat? Everybody still awake?
Yeah.
Thank you, Pat. We appreciate your information. Item 13.
Item 13 is the annual review and adoption of the Minnehaha County Investment Policy. Pam Nelson.
Good morning, Pam.
I'm not sure if I'm supposed to say something, or do you just feel a little... Do you want to say something?
Only if you want to.
Oh, well, there are a couple of things about the policy that I thought were kind of interesting that you should know. The policy, really, when I came here about eight years ago, hadn't been reviewed for 20 years. So, then, we put this pretty great committee together, and we came up with the policy that we currently have. The policy, one of the things the policy says is that you have to review the policy and then adopt it every year, so you at least have an opportunity to take a look at it. The investments in Minnehaha County are pretty much governed by a couple of important things. One is that you have to invest in local banks. You have to spend your money in the local banks, and I think that's kind of a good idea, and it's interesting. The other thing that sort of restricts our investment a little bit is that you have to have, our policy says anyway, and I, I thought it was a great idea, is that you should not ever risk principal. It's a very conservative thing. The other thing that limit us, limited, limits us quite a bit is that we only have our money for a very short time, about 65 days to 90 days, most of the money. And if you, and then we determined what we were going to measure our success or not success at, and that was reflected on the bar graph that you got, and the T-bill rate was what we used. And so, as you can see from looking at your bar graph, we did pretty well, considering the economic times. And that said, I guess, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions? Commissioner Heiburger?
I just had one question, we're reading through the document, and the diversification, that there was no percentage in there, does that just change? Or is it just that, it just said, "No more than blank percent of the invested, investable funds will be placed into any one financial institution." Is that something that changes on, on a yearly basis, or, I just wondered why it was blank? Not that it's any...
It changes periodically, but it's, they think it's, it's not ever a good idea that the committee decided to have all your money, all your eggs in one basket. It's better protection if you don't.
I was just curious why they didn't have a percentage in there, they just left it blank?
Well, because it's hard to come up with the right number.
Okay.
Depends on how much money you really have to invest. Certainly, if you had $100 billion in the bank or something, that'd be a bigger concern all in one place than if you had $5 million or something. So, they decided that it was, should be decided based on the amount of revenue that you have.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Barth.
Pam, one of the issues that we have is that nobody really wants to hold on to $10 million overnight, right?
Right.
And so, then, it, it costs them, and we don't, they don't want to give us anything for it. And yet, in a sense, that's what happens when we collect taxes for the schools.
And if you look at the problem areas, the only parts that we had were a little bit lower to the T-bill rate, were in the months of April and November, and that's because of the property taxes and the limit, and that's where you, they find those purchase, what's it called? Repurchase agreements. That's, they, after $30 million in the bank, they don't pay interest on it anymore. But it, they don't have it very long either, because it's dispersed within a few days. But it costs them too much money, and we usually bid, we have a $5 million CD right now, we're going to rebid and see what we get, but the last five or six times we asked for bids on CDs, nobody bid.
Any other questions? If not, I have a couple.
Sure.
First of all, FDIC limits of insurability, there, were over that in most cases, I'm guessing. Is that an issue with the state law? Because I, I don't remember the exact amount of FDIC limits. Do you remember, Bob?
I think it's up to $300,000 per account, that's at Project Council, too, so I'm not too sure.
Okay. The other thing that, that struck me is that Sioux Falls has both traditional banks and non-traditional banks. Traditional banks pay bank franchise taxes that pay, frankly, help us as a county from a support standpoint. Non-traditional banks don't pay bank franchise taxes, as I understand it. So, my question is, is do, do traditional banks get preference for investments?
Not unless the policy would request that they do. The state law certainly doesn't say that.
But if we're supporting non-traditional banks with deposits, then we're not supporting ourselves, correct? Ken, you're either telling me to be quiet or raising your hand.
Could you define non-traditional, too, please?
I can't.
Credit card, credit card company. Credit card banks.
Credit card company. The banks that own credit card companies are non-traditional.
Right. And those, just as a point of clarification, and I don't think I have the answer to your main question, but the credit card banks do in fact pay a bank franchise tax, it just doesn't come to us.
Doesn't come to the county.
Right. Most of that money for the credit card banks under the bank franchise goes to the state, and then, so, we derive our bank franchise tax from the traditional banks. That's, that's, we're, we're the, local government's the recipient of the majority of that money.
I'd like to make sure that my assumptions are correct. So, would the two of you get together and research that, the traditional versus the non-traditional? Because I think that's a conversation that we need to have to support ourselves, frankly, from a bank franchise. Because even if you think it's a small amount, I mean, and it's not, but the return on the investment is coming back to us as a county if we're using traditional bank services.
I'd be happy to work with Ken, but I, I, we bank mostly.
We are at traditional banks.
Most of the banks that bid on our stuff, they're all traditional. They're not really credit card banks.
Well, I think that's great, and I'm more than happy to support that. The, the deal is, is I think we ought to have that conversation and maybe have an internal policy, if you will, on where that money goes, because it would make, at least to me, it makes more sense to invest in ourselves, so to speak, than it would be in a non-traditional way.
Well, personally, I think that's a good idea, so for myself, if you want to put it and add it to our investment policy, that would be acceptable as well.
Okay.
But personally, you have my word that I will do that.
No.
I think we've been doing it anyway, but it never really came up at the meeting, our investment meetings, it really didn't come up.
Does anybody have any concerns or comments?
Mr. Chair, John and I were on that committee seven years ago, and at that time, we thought that we should periodically review our policy and stuff, and I think, you know, this would be that type of a situation, we should maybe reconvene of some kind.
Commissioner Barth. Yeah, and I remember at the time, we were more concerned with yield than we were about competition. I know that we had involvement of the banking community, at least our, our local banks were involved, and we wanted to make sure that not one bank was sitting on a mound of county money, and we were excluding everybody else from basically their money as well, because, believe me, we're stewards of public money, so we want to spread it around as best we can. But we weren't considering competition, we were more concerned with yields, so trying to get the proper benchmark established with, with the treasury is what we ended up doing, but we can always tweak it.
And my assumption also is, is that all banks are paying property taxes which support the county, so that's another issue that needs to be considered, but I think we ought to address those issues personally in the next few weeks. Commissioner.
Now, I understand why I kept forgetting you, because nobody looks this way.
I'm just trying to get even.
I, I think it's perfectly legitimate for us to have, to look at the policy and perhaps have a policy of traditional banks being our, our source of deposit, so.
If you want.
You say it hasn't been brought up, but it has now today, so.
Well, yeah, that's exactly why we suggested that we review it regularly, if the world changes a little bit. I'd be more than happy to change the policy. It's not an issue. We bid everything, and certainly, in a bid process, if they were close, that would be one thing to consider.
Yep.
The other thing that they did decide that I thought was really important is that you don't risk the principal. So.
Yep. Well, the yields right now are not very good.
No, they're not.
Anywhere, so.
But if you just want me to change it, that's not a problem.
Well, I think we need to have a group review it, and you kind of know the intent of, I think, of where we're going, so if you want to come up with a rough draft, that'd be great.
Which group do you want to review it?
Well, I think the treasurer and the auditor need to be involved, and this and Ken, if you would be involved also, the three of you can come up with.
Not a problem.
That would be my recommendation.
Do you want us to do that by the next meeting?
No.
Well, I'm ruling, I mean.
If you can get those two together with you at any time.
Your priority, though, it's mine.
Here are at least two weeks.
Yeah, we'll give you a couple weeks.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
Item 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign proposal from Caliber Creative for development of Minnehaha County branding and graphic standards. Carol Muller and Ken McFarland.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Minnehaha County Human Services. Last December, then-chairman Kelly brought forward a committee to address the graphic identity of Minnehaha County. On that committee, it was myself, Ken McFarland, Cindy Heiburger, and Dick Kelly. We met in late December to begin this process. At this meeting, we discussed why a graphic identity is important and what does it include, along with some of the special considerations of Minnehaha County, such as elected officials, affiliations, accreditations that we may have, co-branding, marketing efforts, and recognition of targeted audiences. Currently, right now, if I wanted to use blue paper with purple jackalopes on there, I could go through and do that. So, we're looking for consistency across the board for Minnehaha, for Minnehaha County. Caliber Creative has put forth, forth a proposal for us, which we feel is, is a good proposal, anticipating that this is probably going to be less than $10,000 or $12,000. It's an à la carte menu for us to go through and pick and choose what we want to go through and work with. This would be a one-time investment and would give us the tools to go through and work with in each of our departments. Questions we can answer for you?
Thank you, Carol. Questions for Carol? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a motion or is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Kelly, second it. Any questions for Carol?
Now, is the motion going to just authorize her to go to the quinn to continue on?
The motion is to sign the proposal from Caliber in order to proceed with the project that they moved.
But there are items in here that if we do the others, we don't have to do one, Aunt Carol.
Yeah. I guess, Ken, I would anticipate that signing that proposal that empowers the committee to go through and see if there's some things on there that they want to cross off.
Well, and just a comment, I Carol's really done a yeoman's job on this thing of getting it rolling, getting it along. I believe that this is the same outfit that did the helpline redesign.
Yes, last year.
And did a very good job with that. And our whole premise was that we want to have some consistency in the county. And image is important, no matter how you say it, even for our city or our county or state. So, this is an attempt to become to get some stuff together and find out what we can work with and find out what the different departments' concerns are. I would hope the commission would support this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Beckus?
Well, I just want to make sure that although I'm sure they do wonderful work, that I'm sure that they're going to understand that we own the image and that it's not going to be anything that's going to be subject to their copyright claim later on.
We've covered a lot of those things already with them, including the fact that we're a very frugal organization. So, we want to make sure that everything is digitized for us to be able to use in our own copiers and printers and all those type of things.
Right.
That are out there and the monochrome and, yeah, all those type of things. We've been over no special cuts that make things more expensive will not exist.
Carol can watch the penny better than anybody I've ever seen.
I think we have a motion and a second on the table for frankly, the buffet of services that could be provided and that we've approved the committee's responsibility to pursue this. And any other questions or comments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously.
Item 15 is consider a motion to approve grant application to the South Dakota Council of Juvenile Services to expand the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative to partner counties. Ken McFarland.
Morning. Commissioners, about two weeks ago, we were notified by the Council of Juvenile Services that they have some leftover grant money from the JDAI initiative that they wanted to allocate to the two pilot sites in the state that are implementing the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative. As you know, we've been involved with that project for about two, two and a half years, and we are well into our third year of that pilot project. And I'm happy to say, I feel it's been quite a successful project in reducing our use of secured detention at the JDC and implementing alternatives to secured detention for the benefit of our youth involved with our judicial system. The purpose of this particular grant is to begin the work to hopefully extend JDAI into not only our partner county in the Second Judicial Circuit, Lincoln County, but also to begin the groundwork to try to implement the framework to implement JDAI in the First Circuit. And so, we have a grant proposal application prepared that's actually due tomorrow. And we would like to get your authorization to support that grant to help put JDAI into our partner counties with the detention center. It's a $25,000 grant. 5,000 of it would be used to help support and fund some of our already developed alternatives, such as electronic monitoring, home detention, and hopefully, very soon, SCRAM units for juveniles. You know, and Lincoln County is particularly important to the Council of Juvenile Services because it is a member of our Second Judicial Circuit. Now, I do want to tell you that it would be our intent to look at implementing the grant probably on July 1. I mean, there's a number of changes that happen on July 1. But this will be a phased-in process with Lincoln County in particular. As a point of information, one of the things that we needed as part of the grant application was an assurance from the Lincoln County Commission that if we were able to put together some alternatives for them and they could have access to those in the detention center, that they would be willing to fund those alternatives in lieu of paying us for secure beds and that for juveniles that qualify. I'm happy to report that Robert and Aaron Sertzka, our JDAI coordinator, are on their way back from Canton as we speak with the signed resolution in hand from Lincoln County that does that. And that so, that will be part of the grant application. The other $20,000 will be used to, again, lay the framework in the First Judicial Circuit, which is primarily the southeast corner of the state, in order to go through the same processes that we did as far as establishing the policy review committee, getting the memorandums of understanding together, providing some training opportunities with our county being the learning lab for JDAI for those counties. So, we hope that you will support this effort. Grant funds do need to be expended by the end of September, I believe. So, this is a one-time shot to help us expand JDAI into the counties that we serve at the detention center.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions, Ken? Since it's due tomorrow, I'm sure we need an activity right today to get it going.
I want to make a motion.
I'll second with a comment.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Heiburger.
We had a meeting here last week with a lot of members from the Circuit 1 and discussed this. And I think everybody there was very excited about moving forward with JDAI principles.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Beckus?
Well, I was just whispering to Kirsten that I've gone full circle. I remember first hearing the argument about boot camps. And now, we've gone to JDAI. And so, it's interesting, as long as you sit here long enough, eventually, you come around to the pendulum swings back. And I do think that I'm going to support this. I do think that expanding this obviously makes all the sense in the world with our partners in our juvenile detention facility. And I see that Doug Hoffman is still the judge, and he kind of eats, breathes, and lives this currently. And it'll be good to see that expand into the First Circuit. It's going to save a ton of money. And this is actually the blueprint that the governor's using on his proposal up in Pier. So, not only are we expanding this for juveniles across a majority of South Dakota, at least in the First Circuit and the Second Circuit of the population, but then we also have the state in Pier looking at it on whether or not it would apply to an adult population. And so, I just think it makes all the sense in the world to move forward on this.
Thank you, John. Any other comments?
I'd just like to remind the audience, since this proposal was adopted a few years ago and Commissioner Heiburger's been actively involved with JDC and all the other things, I think the population of in facility attendees, if you will, has dropped by almost 50%. So, it's been a great program for alternatives, and it is a lot less expensive. So, thank you for your work on that.
One of the key elements of the program, and this is what we want to impress upon our partner counties. And, you know, and I think our partner counties would be very receptive to it. We've been able to do this by not increasing our cost, but simply redirecting the cost that we spend already in this area and putting those costs, you know, from secured detention towards non-secure alternatives. So, that's really been the key to implementation for us.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the application. And the deadline, I think, is tomorrow. Any other questions, comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously.
Item 16 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and W. Hayward Burns Institute for Assessment of Services in conjunction with disproportionate minority contact grant from the South Dakota Council of Juvenile Services for the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you know, Minnehaha County was also awarded a grant through the JDAI initiative and the Council of Juvenile Services, specifically in the amount of $65,000 to specifically deal with our disproportionate minority confinement issues associated with the JDAI project. What we bring, and as you remember from that budget, one part of the budget was going to be for an assessment of the existing services and to help us to develop alternatives specifically addressed to our minority youth in confinement to help reduce that disproportionality. And then also to use a portion of the grant for vouchers for various agencies that design these programs. What I'm bringing to you today is the agreement for the first part of that project, which is the contract for the assessment of services with the H. Howard Burns Institute. This agreement is consistent with what you saw in our initial application, both in scope and dollar value. And we just are now bringing the contract to your to you for your approval so we can review and begin the disproportionate minority contact portion of JDAI.
I'm going to make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 16. Any questions for Ken? Commissioner Beckus?
I'll just quote Ronald Reagan, trust but verify. The goal of a grant is constantly to not only accept the money, but you have to follow through with the last step of the process where you actually do your assessment and to make sure the grant is meeting with what we are requiring of it. And so, I think it's important that we spend a little time to do the review, and this is exactly what we're doing.
Any other questions for Ken? Any questions, comments from the audience? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is unanimous.
Item 17 is to consider changes to Minnehaha County policy regarding petition gatherers at Minnehaha County facilities. This was deferred from January 15. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you know, the issue of our petition gathering policy was brought up for discussion at a committee meeting last week. And you deferred consideration of any of those potential changes to this week. If you would allow me, I would like to, for the sake of the audience and those that are here, is to go over what the current policy is and then the impact of perhaps some of the changes that you talked about last week. And then again, some of the feedback that I've received since this issue was made public. What you have before you up on the screen and on your iPads, the first part, is our particular policy right now. And this policy is contained in the Minnehaha County Policies and Procedures Manual. And that it's not an ordinance or anything like that, but it's an administrative policy that governs the use of buildings within our campus. Right now, and if you will, I think it's important just to quickly read what the policy does in fact state. It says, "Minnehaha County buildings, particularly the administration building, have traditionally been popular locations for citizens gathering signatures for ballot petitions. Minnehaha County appreciates those citizens who wish to take an active role in federal, state, and local government decisions. County buildings are also public facilities that need to accommodate many people every day without any unnecessary delay or inconvenience. Therefore, the county has adopted guidelines for individuals gathering petitions on county property. All persons wishing to gather signatures for a ballot question on Minnehaha County property will abide by the following guidelines. Number one, remain outside of county buildings and not obstruct individuals as they enter and exit the building. Number two, conduct themselves in a polite, courteous, and professional manner." And then number three, and this is a provision that's specifically addressing this building that doesn't apply to other buildings according to the policy. And then, just because of the high-traffic nature of this building, we say, "In the case of severe weather, the commissioned administrative officer," which is myself, "may allow individuals collecting signatures to stand inside the administrative building entryway," and that's the one on the west side here, "if they do not impede those entering and leaving the building." Now, this is, I believe, the issue of the policy that has raised some concerns, both by members of the public and by members of the county commission. And I thought it would be helpful that you know how I've interpreted this particular policy since my office is particularly mentioned here. Again, and that in the case of weather, I've allowed up to one person to be in that entryway if weather conditions dictated it. Now, one of the things that I have found in this last go-around of the petition drive, and I think it is kind of an anomaly. First off, I can never remember a petition drive that's really gone on this long into the deep into the wind. Typically, these are things are done in the spring, the summer, and by fall. This is really the first time I can remember it's been an ongoing drive into the winter months. And given the fact that a lot of the, in this particular petition drive, are senior citizens that have been the petition carriers and not typically our folks that do the, what I call the paid petitioners, I have been a little bit more lenient with those folks because of weather conditions and that and the cold. Now, what might be nice to you and I is not necessarily nice to some of the folks carrying those petitions. And for the most part, I believe the petition gatherers have been very receptive to when I remind them, there should be no more than one person in there. And that because of the fact that, and I have designated a spot in there because of our handicap access issues that we have on the other side of the entryway, and that's where the button is to open the doors for folks in wheelchairs. One of the things, too, I know that I've been a little lenient on, there's been some individuals that have needed the assistance due to medical conditions of a stool or a chair. And I've asked them to be very respectful of that and to make sure that they stay up against the heater as much as they can without blocking the entryway. And that and for the most part, I felt that that's been taken care of. But the policy, as you can see right now, doesn't restrict the numbers of people in the entryway or doesn't restrict the use of any devices, tables, chairs, or anything like that. But that's how I've been interpreting the policy and administering it based on this. Now, based on your conversations last week, and that I took away from that conversation two main points. There's an amendment here that I've prepared for your consideration. And again, this is based on the commission discussion last week. One issue is, they wanted to make sure that folks, and this does two things. Number one, it just simply says, you can't, you have to be outside. You can't use the entryway in the admin building. You got to be outside on that on all county buildings. But we specifically say, make sure you remain to the left or the right of the doorway so as not to restrict or block the pathway in and out of the doorway. And so, that was an issue that you discussed. And under this amendment, we also take, it removes the ability to be in the building and removes any of the discretion that I might have under the current policy. And number two, amendment number two, it simply leaves the current policy in place with the number three, but it does reinforce that when you are on the outside of the building, you need to remain to the left or right of the doorway so as not to restrict or block the pathway in and out. Now, since you have done this and had this discussion, I've received a lot of feedback from folks, both on the phone and both folks coming into the office. And some of those inquiries have been, why do you allow people in the building in the first place? And when I explained that we're talking about an entryway, a lot of those concerns are alleviated, and nobody really has an issue with it, or at least the persons that called. I've had some suggestions that petition gatherers should be restricted to a designated spot, either outside the, you know, particularly outside the admin building on the west side, either a pad or an existing location or something that says, here's where you can petition. I've also had some suggestions that due to the high volume of traffic in the admin building is, why couldn't we have a spot in the lobby next to those concrete or those stone benches that are right in the lobby and set up a table and say, this is where petition people are? And finally, I've had suggestions that say, leave the policy in place, but specifically state that only one person can be in the entryway. And so, I've had so many suggestions about how we should do this and far, far too many for me to try and craft an amendment on every single suggestion that I've received. And that so, the two amendments I did do are what I gathered from the feedback from the commission discussion last week. So, I know that there are a number of people that are here that would like to discuss this issue. But I thought it was important to give you at least some background on what my efforts have been according to the policy and how I've interpreted that. And... my efforts have been according to the policy and how I've interpreted that and how I've responded to, to the issue. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Ken. Are there any questions from the commissioners?
I, I do want to comment, because I know there's several people here that want to discuss this issue, but I would hope, maybe there might be some discussion amongst the commission so that the people understand. I think there's a lot of misconceptions out there as to what we're trying to do and why. And I just bringing in, you know, if they bring into their argument something that really we have never been thinking about, I guess that's my only concern there. And I personally don't think we need to so much take action today as get this thing rolling, but it's up to the chair, obviously, which way he wants to go with it. I just would have some comments to make and maybe affect what, what the thinking is on it. I can measure those for later.
Other questions for Ken? Otherwise, we will ask for comments from the audience. What we have in place, if I might, yeah, thank you. If I might, the current policy is, as you all know what the policy was just read, so there isn't any approved amendments on the floor at this point. And we have, we'll call those the proponents of leaving it exactly the way it is currently as proponents. If you are opposed to that, we'll call those opponents. If I might, I'd like to know how many people plan on speaking this morning as a proponent of leaving it like it is, or if you have a spokesperson, that would be awesome also. But if you could raise your hand if you're going to plan on speaking, we have two people, okay. Three people, you have to raise your hand higher, I can't see. Four?
Five.
Five, okay.
Six?
Possible.
We may have a possibility. I don't know what that means, but anyway.
We'll agree.
Okay, thank you. And if there are any opponents, we have one for sure. Okay, thank you. Teresa, if, we know who you are, obviously, but if you'd like to speak, we'll start with the proponents. We'd kind of like to limit the time and not repeat five times or six times, because we are slow learners, but we do get it usually the first time. So if you wouldn't mind starting and give us your name and address, that would be awesome.
Do we have to give addresses?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, do we have to have a time limit?
We'll see how it goes, since there's not that many individuals here, and she's already expressed.
We've been patiently waiting, yes.
Well, unfortunately, we all have to be here.
I understand, but, okay. Teresa Staley, sixteen twenty-one South Van Epps Avenue. I've been a resident in Sioux Falls since nineteen eighty-four, and in the past seven years, I have been at this courthouse many, many times gathering signatures. And as I told Jeff Barth last week, I love this place. I love the process of interacting with the people, and, and there is nothing more democratic than being in the midst of people talking about issues that affect all of us. I am deeply grateful to the people in our community who have been willing to come forth and volunteer to gather these signatures, and you've all seen them. They're volunteers, they care. We stand in the cold, we give up our time to do this. This last Snowgate petition drive, we got over eight thousand signatures in ten weeks. We had planned to get fifty-five hundred signatures in five months, and it was a fabulous discourse among the people about what's happening in our community. I am grateful to the petition process, and this is a fabulous gift to our city, and I'm, I'm not sure how all of you feel about us being there, but I also want to say I am very grateful to the county people who were kind to us, and specifically, Ken McFarland was very generous, supportive, helpful. Pam Nelson, again, always supportive, cheerful, encouraging, and Bob Litz, I very, very appreciate that. And this is, this is a place for people. It's, we pay the taxes, this is our place. It's not an elected official's place, it belongs to everyone. So as we were doing this, there were times when we were allowed to be inside. I tried, as the, as the leader of the group, I tried to make that clear to people, and we had over fifty people helping, which is fabulous. That's a good thing, and they were not paid. But I tried to say, you know, "If it's cold and we're allowed to have one person in there, stay out of the way, be, be respectful," and we were respectful. There were times people will come up and say negative things to us. One time, a guy even spit. Yeah, we had to have your custodian come and clean it up, remember, Ken? Yeah. I mean, so, I mean, we're out there in the spirit of democracy, standing for something as citizens, and so I said, "Stay off to the side if you're inside. We appreciate it. There's some days it's so cold out there, the pens do not work." And, but, we had many people who stood outside. I, I was very surprised when I heard that this issue had come up last week, and I, we're done. We did our petition drive. I'm here because I'm concerned about the future for people. I want to protect it for anyone who, I may not agree with the cause. Abortion was out there a few years ago, I didn't agree with that, but I respect our ability to petition. It's not the issue that we should be making a decision on, it's, it's the process that is so important. So I would just strongly encourage you to leave it as it is with the, and actually, in the seven years I've been here, I've never seen this policy either. So that's, that's something that maybe needs to be communicated with people when they're out there doing it, but we adhere to this anyway as far as respect, keeping the flow of traffic going. And, you know, we, let's face it, when you got people having discussions, and that's fat, it's like a town square. There might, may be a bottleneck sometimes, and I was always trying to get people off to the side, but we don't ever want to do anything that is going to squish public discussion. That, that is not what democracy is about. Martin Luther King was not about that. So that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Teresa. Teresa, would you spell your last name? I think we need to have that, just to make sure we do it right.
S.T.E.H.L.Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask her a question?
Commissioner Barth, would you like to ask her something?
Teresa, you know, again, this is our, this is this building. What about the other buildings in the community, like the post office? They don't allow you indoors.
Well, and that's, that is a federal building.
And that is different how? It's a public building or paid for by taxpayers?
I understand, but this, here's, it's just been the tradition, Jeff, and I don't understand why this is, this is the place where people have gathered to get signatures, so.
That is a place. I've gotten them at the post office and other places.
I've been to the post office as well.
I'm just wondering what.
But I'm just, I don't know why this has just come up recently. If something is working, and granted, like Ken said, in the wintertime, this hasn't really been an issue before.
Okay, I was just going to ask you.
And there is a concern that this is coming up because there is something going on against the Spellerburg-ish effort here.
I can assure you that that's not the case.
Well, I hope that, I'm hoping and praying that that's not the case.
So what about City Hall? Do they let you in there?
You know, I've never even tried to get into City Hall.
How about at the cathedral?
Well, we got.
Do they let petition carriers indoors there?
Let's try to keep this about the policy for here.
I'm just saying that this is the only building in the city that people go in.
I understand, Jeff.
But Jeff, you seem to be angry about it, and I don't think that this has been a, this has not been a bad thing.
No, it has not.
It's not, it's been a very positive thing, so.
Thank you.
I have another question.
Teresa, would you mind ask, answering another?
Okay.
Commissioner Kelly?
Teresa, you made the comment that this is the taxpayer's building and not, not ours, which is true, but we are elected to set policies for the building, and I don't think it's any kind of power grab or anything else, it's simply that, that we as a commissioner are, are elected and expected to set policies regarding the, in this particular instance, the use of the building. I don't know if anybody's had any problems with, problems with your groups. Last summer, though, there was a lot of significant problems because there were many, many issues on the ballot, and, and we too, I think, have to look at the future and, because that, I think we're going to see more and more of it, and, and it's just the attitude of the people right now, and if they don't like something, they want to get it elected, voted on, and that's their right. But to say that it's, you know, to take, to indicate or infer that it's kind of a power grab on our part is not true. We're just setting policies for the, for the best use of this building.
Well, and I don't think I said "power grab."
Pardon?
I didn't say, use the word "power grab."
No, but you.
I'm trying to be, I'm trying to present this in a positive way that says, "We don't have a problem. We're making, somehow it's becoming a problem," and I, I think that it can, we can have a compromise here and just have a middle of the ground that says, "If you're, if it's very cold and you're out there and you, you stand off to the side and you're not impeding traffic, it's okay." And I'll tell you, I stood inside myself, and the people who, many, many people signed who were happy to sign inside, but I was careful to keep them out of the way so people could move through.
Well, I just, you know, we, we set the policies for it. If, if we're setting the wrong policies, then I suppose that's something that should come up at election time, but it's, it's not intended, and it certainly is not against any particular petition drive, be it Spellerburg or, or the Snowgates or anything else. We're looking at a policy that, that we can establish so that we don't have to have somebody down there always watching. In the case of summer, there was probably at times four or five different issues, ballot issues, that people were talking about. That's a lot of people down there.
Well, and that, that's the nitty-gritty of democracy. It's not always clean and clear.
I'm not denying that, Teresa.
And you might have ten people down there doing petitions, and that's, we don't want to start limiting, you know, I, I personally, I'd say, "Bring it on." I mean, that's fabulous, so.
That's not what I'm saying, Teresa. The fact is that there were, there were all these people down there, and this, this policy did not anticipate having five, six, seven people down there.
Right, but they weren't all trying to stand inside that entryway, were they, Dick?
They were impeding traffic, I'll tell you that.
Well, then, they need to, well, and here, it comes back to the fact that they, they needed to be given that policy. As I said, I've never seen that policy. I personally got the sense of making it happen, so it's, if someone's down there.
Well, I agree, yeah, the petitioner should be given the policy.
Yes, and then you say, "Stand away," you know, "Do not," and, and keep people off to the side when they're signing.
Thank you, Teresa. I'll remind all of us, just because I think it's important to do that, is the policy is stated, but there's also a piece in there that I want to read, it says that we should all conduct ourselves in polite, courteous, and professional manner, and that means both sides of the microphones here and back in the audience. So we want to make sure that we keep this to the policy and not about individuals or personalities or anything else, because I think that it's important for us to do this correctly, and it's about the policy, it has nothing to do with individuals or personal opinions, so. Good morning, Scott.
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Scott, you're going to have to.
Eight oh six South Tenth Avenue.
Yeah, I don't know how to spell your last name.
E.H.R.I.S.M.A.N.
Thank you.
I, before I get into what I was going to say, I just want to address something Jeff said to Teresa. He talked about the post office, the cathedral, and other federal government buildings. Thing why the county administration building is the best place to get petitions is because the people are coming here to do business with their government, their local government. And what a better place to come and get a signature than the county administration building, because you have to live in this city or this county in order to get those signatures. That's why this place works the best. They got over eight thousand signatures in ten weeks here at the county administration building, not any other building. They went to other places, but this was the main, I'd have to say, probably ninety percent of their signatures came from here. That is the reason why the county administration building is important for petition gathering. I'm going to start with a couple of quotes from, from a couple presidents, and I, I don't quote Republican presidents like Mr. Pecos. I haven't heard of, maybe Lincoln. Lyndon B. Johnson said, "Free speech, free press, free religion, the right of free assembly, yes, the right of petition." Well, they are still radical ideas. You know, this government has been around for two hundred years, and the right to petition is one of our rights as, as, as citizens. I've often said that if elected officials have a problem with petitions, they should do a better job as elected officials, because, trust me, a lot of us don't like going out and doing petition drives. It's, it's messy, it's hard work. You know, we ask our elected officials to do their jobs, and sometimes they don't. So in turn, we have to go around and do petitions, and we have to do them in the most efficient and fairest way possible. President Obama called to action yesterday when he said the world, to the world about the values of American democracy. You and I, as citizens, have the power to set the country's course. You and I, as citizens, have the obligation to shape the debates of our time, not only with the votes we cast, but with the voices we lift in defense of our most ancient values and enduring ideals. What he's saying there is that the citizens should be ultimately in charge of their government and, and have the power. As Teresa said, we pay the heating bill of this building, we come here to do our business, we pay the wages, everybody works in this building. It's our building, just as much as it's your building, and as long as I believe that if the petitioners are being courteous and, and not impeding traffic, I mean, there has to be rules, I totally understand, the policy is, is good just the way it is. There's no reason that we need to change it. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions to Scott?
Mr. Chair, if I just might comment on something Scott said. I'm totally in agreement that people do come here, and that's because the county is the service station of government. This is where you come to pay your taxes, register to vote, et cetera, and that's why people come here. Thanks.
Thank you. I think some of the ladies raised their hands if they would like to come forward, they may, or if you change your mind, that's okay, too.
Hi, I'm Liz Mylenberg from the Citizens Saving Spellerburg Group, twelve oh nine South Jefferson, Sioux Falls.
Liz, I'm sorry, could you spell your last name, please?
M.U.I., L.E.N., B.U.R.G.
B.U.R., thank you.
Correct. I'm an educator, retired, twenty-seven years, twenty-one of those in the city of Sioux Falls, six in Brandon. I've lived in Sioux Falls since seventy-four, raised three wonderful children, and married to Tom Mylenberg, a retired attorney, who has given a great deal of his heart and soul to the citizens of this community and South Dakota. I've paid my taxes, obeyed the laws, and never before become politically active, but feel I have a strong issue here that's, needs my attention, that being Spellerburg. I'm the person that's been a, the center of some con, some discussion about sitting on a stool, which I have backed up to the wall. I do that only because I have severe spinal stenosis and it helps me control pain level. And I do it simp, and I like to be active, and I do it so that I can be down here. What concerns me is I have, feel like I've been targeted somewhat because I was using that stool, and no one has voiced a concern to me at all. That bothers me because I would be willing to work with anybody that had a problem with me being there on that stool. I deeply appreciate being here. Like I said, it's the first time I've ever been involved in such a process, and I appreciate being inside. It's flu season, it's cold out there, pens don't work if you're outside, and I appreciate being at the west entrance, because that's where the people come. I want to tell you that we have followed all the rules and tried to be very accommodating and polite. We all, all of us are retired people, most of us are retired, and we are professionals that have worked with the public and know how to work with the public. We've received hundreds of comments of appreciation from the, of people coming and going that we have put our time and effort into the issue. Again, I deeply apologize if my stool is a problem, and I'm trusting you to make the right decisions for all citizens, and I do not think the current policy should be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Questions for Liz? The next lady, if you would like.
I'm Judy Lampert, and that's L.A.M.P. as in Peter, E.R.T., no Bs in there. Two zero one six West Twenty-second Street, on the corner of Twenty-second and Western, which is a very busy place, almost to the corner. This is the first time I've ever done any petition work also, and it's been a very interesting experience. We've had a wonderful opportunity to meet a lot of the citizens of Sioux Falls. I'm very surprised that we're down here today, because I think we have followed all the rules. We, we have tried to be good to the public, we help open doors, we greet them, we try to stay off to the side, we, we try to do everything according to the rule, and all of a sudden, there's a commotion and we have to come to City Hall. This is a surprise to us, because we thought we were doing the right thing. This is a surprise to us, because we thought we were doing the right thing. One of the things that surprises me most is that if we haven't been doing as we were supposed to, no one has let us know prior to last week. This is all very sudden, and that's why we're here this week. We hope the commission will consider the weather. In our opinion, when the weather's cold enough for the pens to freeze and people cannot sign, it's cold enough to come inside the vestibule. We also have never had more than one person at a time in that vestibule, except when we are exchanging shifts, and one person is coming in and one person is going out. So we have also abided by the rule of having only one person at a time in that vestibule. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy. Questions for her? I think we have one more person.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Pat Anawski, and that's spelled A N A W S, as in Sam, K I. And I live at eighteen thirteen South Willow, and we have resided there for over fifty years, have five children, and me, myself, too. This is the first time I've ever been involved in an issue of any kind of this sort. And yes, I'm one of the Spellerburg petitioners. I like it. I can't say that, well, first of all, I'll backtrack. Going down there has been an experience, coming down here to the courthouse, and we, I've tried to follow the rules, as I know my friends have, too. Mr. McFarland came over and one time had mentioned, stay to the left of the doorway down there at the annex, which I've done, I've stayed to the left, and he said, "Don't impede on people coming in where there is handicap." And I've done that, and we all have. And also, when people come down to the courthouse, we open up the doors for them, and they are so gracious. I mean, you would think that you were their long-lost friend. They come in and we say, "Good morning, how are you?" And they go, "Oh, fine, thank you." And then we let them proceed about their business. And the thing is, nobody wants to come down to the courthouse, because first of all, you have to pay your taxes. That's real fun. Then you've gotta go and get your license plates and stand in line. That's real fun. So actually, we're setting the tone for you people, and you don't even know it. We're setting the tone, we're letting people come in, and they say, "Thank you," when we open up the door for them. They say, "Thank you so much." And also, sometimes I've said, or people have said to me, "Do you know where such and such an office is?" And I go, "Hmm, if I know, I will tell them. If I don't know, I say it's to the right, or you go ahead and you'll see on that mark, kind of that big post there, where you can go." And they go, "Oh, thank you so very much." I mean, they're nice people that come down here, just like we're nice people as to what we're doing. We pay our taxes, you guys pay your taxes. So that's why I think we should be down here, this is my opinion, but many of us, I think we should be down here, because we have a right. We're citizens of Sioux Falls, have been here for years, and we have that right. City Hall is a great place. We've met some nice people, and they always thank us. They say, "Thank you for doing what you're doing. How much do you get paid?" And I go, "No, I don't think we get paid. It would be nice, but we don't get paid." And they say, "Oh, well, thank you again for your service. We need people like you down here. We need people." So, you know, we need you guys, but you need us to have a good PR relationship. And I guess I can only say what the rest of my people have said, too. I love these people that I work with, they're the nicest people you're ever gonna find. And if you guys take a chance and get to know them, you're gonna like them, and hey, we just are passionate about what we're doing, which is keeping Spellerburg as an outdoor pool. Not the right location, but that's our thought. We're passionate, and that's why we're down here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions for her? I don't believe so. Any other proponents of the policy, Mr. Litz?
Thank you, Commissioner Bob Litz from the auditor's office, and, you know, I think people come down to the county, because this is where we hold elections, and that kind of reaffirms, I think, some basic trust they have in the county office down here. Now, in the interest of disclosure, I've had a couple of these fine ladies work elections for me, and another one actually taught my children, so I've got fond spot in my heart for them. That said, I also go in that cafeteria every day, and I see those folks in the wheelchair, and I've come to know a lot of them, too. And I also know a couple of times, some of those folks have missed their rides, and their problems compound in astonishing manner that you and I can't imagine, simply because of the nature of what they're in. A long time ago, when this building was built, we paid some money, some architect, a lot of money, and he decided that the best entrance was gonna be to the east. Maybe he was a Freemason or something, I don't know. But the practicality of the matter is, is the west entrance, due to the parking lot being there, has been the one everybody comes into. Last week, when Mr. Barth brought this up, I thought he had an excellent idea, it had to do with design, and that is to expand that area out there to accommodate a few more people for when these things do come anyway. And that is our main interest down there, and to dress that up a little bit with something wouldn't hurt us one bit. I know that the cost is always there, but, you know, we are a public facility, and to do something like that, I don't think would be totally out of hand. The other proposal that I have is, I don't know why we're keeping people out of this building, and that foyer down there is an awful place to do it, in my mind, because it does get kind of blocked up when you get people going there, and then one of the folks from the cafeteria tries to get their wheelchair in there. The east of the posts, that part of the foyer, is basically unused all day. Some people use it as an access, but not very many of them. And I thought, my idea is twofold, it has to do with design. The number one is, let's fix that front up out there a little bit to be more hospitable to people coming up here and petition carriers. And then the other part would be, in inclement weather, instead of forcing people to be in that foyer, why not keep them east of that post down there? And if they see somebody coming by that wants to talk to them, just pull them on this side of the post. That way, the traffic can go by unimpeded in and out, and east, or north and south in this building. So to me, this whole thing kind of cooks down to a design mistake made long ago, and I think that they're correctable, so, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Chair.
Any questions?
Bob, I think you bring up some good points there, and I think that's something we can look at more. But what about when we're casting absentee ballots and there are petition carriers thirty feet away? Is that any concern of yours? Or should they be able to, you know...
And we went through that last time, and it depends on what the petition carriers are talking about. In most cases, if you've got a petition, your issue's not gonna show up on that ballot. If it's something that's gonna show up on the ballot and you're out there, you know, you're past that point. And that was what Gordy and I had talked about, was the appearance of trying to do some electioneering. But in most cases that I've seen so far, this ballot that these two issues that are down here today are gonna show up on is remote from right now, and they won't be out there when those issues are upon the ballot.
Mr. Chair, so, you know, potentially, there are political petitions that could be, you know, impeach Obama, sign here, that kind of thing. Would you allow that?
No, I think on the day of the election, I think Mr. Swanson made it clear that there are statutes that pertain to electioneering, and we could apply those to that type of situation. And I would not be in favor of that, at least for that day. I think that that's unfair when people are coming in and out of here, especially since I do have a polling place on the premises.
Just a point. Commissioner Kelly?
Because of the absentee voting, the day of the election is actually about sixty days long, is it not?
Due to absentee voting, yes, you could certainly make that case.
So what rule applies on election day applies for the sixty days prior to the election also?
Yes, it would. Well, it would be the six weeks out, yes, forty-five days.
Okay, I want to clarify, six weeks, not sixty days.
Okay.
Yeah, it's six weeks currently, and we don't have to do all those six weeks. We can do whatever we want to, but typically, the auditor's office has expanded it to go out as far as the six weeks that are allowed. Our ballots have to be in forty-eight days ahead of the election, and then just a few days after that's when we start the absentee voting.
Any other questions, comments? We've heard from the proponents of, I would like the opportunity to discuss the opponent's viewpoint. Good morning.
Do you want the Pam Nelson, twenty-five oh five...
There's some reason, I think we all know who you are. I think we know how... Is it O N or E N?
It's O N.
Okay, I'm kidding.
Well, let's say that, I preface my remarks by saying that I really do respect these people, appreciate their efforts. I think there are a couple of things that made this country what it is today. One of them is free, appropriate public education, where we decided to educate the masses, and the second would be petition and initiative and referendum. No one has fought more for making that process available to the citizens of South Dakota than I did when I was in the legislature. There were numerous times when people tried to make it more difficult and make you require more signatures and things, and I always opposed those things. However, one of the reasons that people find this building desirable to gather petitions, signatures quite frankly, is, and I've been gathering signatures for different petitions for over forty years, and the biggest reason was because you could always count on a three-hour or four-hour line at the treasurer's office. And there was access for a lot of people, and you could get, as treasurer, you could get those signatures really quick. Now, you know, so that was one reason this became a desirable place. And they say they own this building, but so do the people who don't agree with them. They also own this building. And somehow, your job is to balance everybody's rights. So I'm thinking that I do have people that come to my office and complain about the crowding and access to the building when they're inside. I support letting them gather signatures on the property. I think they should be able to come in and get warm, but, you know, that's a very narrow, small space to get people in and out of. I would suggest you ask the fire marshal, what do you think of it? Because I have some real serious concerns about that. We did help a person one day trying to leave this building in a wheelchair, and at that point, there were a couple of people gathered around the signatures, and I don't know that it happens all the time. But access is an issue, and for that reason, I am at least suggesting that you check with the fire marshal and see what happens. And I guess I think that outside is okay. I don't think it stops the initiative and referendum process, and, you know, maybe some days are just too cold to gather signatures. And it's equally a problem when it's a hundred and ten in shade. So I think they should be able to come in, and I think they should be able to ask people, but I think they do need to stay out of the way. And frankly, when they're in that little space out there, I don't consider that out of the way, and I have had people complain about it. So I guess I support initiative and referendum. I really appreciate these people. And for Bob's suggestion about changing the design of the entry, it would be down on my priority list, because we took five percent pay cuts one year, and that just wouldn't stack up there so we can gather signatures, and we're capable of doing that outside. And there are also other places where large crowds gather, but I don't think they should be restricted from this one. However, in the entryway does cause, I think, a congestion issue. People have complained about it, and so I think that it's worth discussing. But for myself, I support allowing them to petition, gather signatures. I just think they should be able to come in and get warm or cool, whichever is necessary. But I also think they shouldn't be able to block the doorways. And I think having people inside gathering signatures there, if you stop and say, "Do you want to sign the petition?" And they don't know anything about it, it's not just quick, "Sign the petition," you gotta explain it, that takes time, and then people pile up. So I think it's a problem whether we like to admit it or not, so.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Questions for Pam? Okay, we have the policy in front of us. There's been a couple of amendments proposed, like comments or questions from the commission. Commissioner Heiberg?
I'd like to make a motion with comments, since we're supposed to do a motion and then discussion.
We need a second on...
My motion is to leave it as it is.
Second. We have a motion...
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
To leave it as it is.
To leave it as it is.
Isn't there a motion on the table right now?
No.
No.
There's a motion?
I disagree with that.
Excuse me. We have a motion and a second to leave the policy as is. I'm gonna double-check to make sure. Will Cindy, if there is anything on the table?
Well, the only one, last week at the meeting, there was a motion by Kelly, seconded by Barth, to ban all petition gatherers inside the county administration building that was never voted on last week.
Okay. So it is pending and active for last week's minutes, therefore, that must be resolved first. Yes, it is still on the table. Thank you for that correction. I wasn't here last week and frankly didn't watch the video. So we have a motion and a second. Would you read that again, please, Cindy? So, Dick, you're correct, we need to act on that first.
The motion was to ban all petition gatherers inside the county administration building.
Okay, thank you. Everybody understand what last week's motion was, and Dick, thanks for correcting that.
Mr. Chair, would you allow me to speak on that?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
You've been talking a lot lately. Go ahead.
Well, I just, you know, certainly, the petition drives are going nonstop these days, and who knows how many more will be coming. And I have seen, you know, crowds in excess of what we would want in that entrance foyer area. And my concern has been, you know, the slippery slope of, you know, one person, then two persons, then three, then we're inside the building, then we're sitting at Bob Litz's desk signing them. It could be a slippery slope, you know, it's, the camel puts his nose under the tent, and next thing you know, the camel's in the tent. But at the same time, this particular thing is a bit unique here. We haven't had it this time of year. I do have a concern, because last Friday, the, there was, we were sitting inside, it was forty-eight degrees, it was sunny, it was not windy. There's, the word severe weather is really pretty nebulous, unless you say that it's wind chill of ten below and, you know, rain an inch an hour. Severe weather did not mean that to me on last Friday, and so that's a concern that I have. At the same time, I'm hoping that, you know, maybe this is an anomaly, and maybe we could continue the existing program and keep it under advisement as we consider the idea of building a petition facility on that side of the building in some way, you know, maybe have a little plaza with a larger awning or something. You know, here we had, in the Snowgates petition, they collected three thousand signatures more than they needed. That certainly was obstructing that building somewhat more than was necessary. What if someone decides they want to collect a hundred thousand petitions and go twelve months here until Obama is removed? You know, we, is there some way of making sure that that entry foyer isn't blocked all year round, every year? And possibly, you know, we can continue to study this and find another solution, but I do have concerns about mission creep, about the camel coming in the tent, and I've seen more than two people in there, I've seen more than four or five petitioners outside, and, you know, when they come in around the pillar in there, and when they come in and go down the hall and bother people in Pam's line and, you know, use the counter space in the auditor's office to sign them, at what point do we say this is too far? And that's, I think, where we're at.
Other commission comments? Commissioner Kelly?
First of all, there's a perception that the Spellerburg issue is what brought this to a head, and I want to tell them, it didn't, in my book, it did not. We have been discussing this issue for close to a year, I suppose, at least through last summer, when, or way before even the primary, I think, because of paid circulators out there, the congestion, sometimes the, Ken had more oftentimes than he should have had to go out there and move people, or one guy brings in a card table and a chair, and he sits outside idly. But, I mean, it's a little different program than it was, I think, when this thing was set up. I don't, I really don't believe that this policy envisioned four or five issues being petitioned at one time like they were last summer. I assure the people that, that discussion's been going on a long time, and it was not directed at any individual, and it was not directed at any group, and it just happens that now's a good time to discuss it, because it's before budget, we have time to look at this issue. And I made a motion, which was pretty harsh, but I just wanted it on the table. Any motions amendable, and certainly, I would probably amend what I had made in as a motion, but I wanted to get it on the table, and that's what we've done. And we've got the, we deferred it right away so that there was opportunity for public input, which we got today, and we appreciate that. Particularly, Liz, you are not... Particularly, Liz, you are not, you are not the focus of this thing, and, and I think everybody appreciates the problem that, that you live with, and so, the accommodations, and Ken has been very good. Ken, Ken has tried, and, but it's a little more difficult now with Ken being upstairs, and we need to have some policies in place, I think, that, that people, we have an obligation to get that policy out and let you know what it is. There's no question about that. The access to the building is still a very, very serious problem, because there are a lot of people that go in and out of this. And, and there were times, there were times when it was very congested down there, not, you, you folks didn't see it, because your petition drive was separate from that, but this summer, there was, there were several times it was very problematic. My personal opinion is, one, one, I think that we should set an area outside, aside for this, with, with some fencing and, and perhaps with some sort of a canopy, but I think that has to be studied quite a bit more. I would prefer that if we, we, even if we end up tabling my motion, that, that the chair, I would hope that the chair could appoint a study committee, I think there, you know, with two commissioners and, and maybe two others, that can look at this issue and look at the pluses and the minuses and where we're going. We do need to have a policy that will work next year, and will work for all groups, and will work in five years as much as possible. If petition drives go away, and they aren't going to, because that's the, that's the one right we have in this country that nobody's been taking away from us, and, and I support it fully. Our problem is, we also have to, we also have to set policies and make a building accessible to people, and, and this is what we're trying to find. So, I, I had, I, my intent was not to make a hard, fast rule, never, ever gonna do this, but we do have to have some policies in place. And there were, there were situations that last summer with even the paid, the paid petition gatherers being inside the cubicle, because it was too hot, too cold. If you've got five or six issues, who's going to make the decision as to what person gets to come inside and the others sit out? These are things that have to be looked at. They can't be looked at at a commission meeting, we have too many other things on the agenda. I think they need to be done by a separate group and then brought back to the commission for discussion and public input. But, thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Any other comments that people would like to make on the commission's side?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Pecus?
Well, I'm not going to support an outright ban, and I'm glad that you recognize that we do have a first amendment of freedom to petition, which shall not be abridged, and it's a fundamental liberty. And the policy that we established, I would say is incidental to the petition process, you know, the least restrictive alternative is what we have to have for our little policy, and that was just what you brought up, Dick, and that's the accessibility. That's our accessible entrance for people that need that entrance. And so, that was our goal, was to make sure that people could get in and out, and that was the incidental restriction that we had, if you can even call it that, on the petition process. But I still support that policy, because I think the policy is very clear that we have to make sure that we have accessible entrance for people that need an accessible entrance. I have no problem with people coming inside to go ahead and pass down the petitions. I remember running the gauntlet of the petitioners every time I came to court, whether it was legalized marijuana to save the whale, or whatever it was for that particular time. But, you know, I can honestly tell you that there has been certain times when there's been some congestion around that, and I do agree with Bob, I think it was a design flaw. But, with that being said, it might require us to go ahead and have another area to go ahead and to allow them to do petitions, whether it be outside, whether it requires some simple remodeling, but I, I don't agree with a ban at all on the petition process, so.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Heiburger?
Since we're all making our comments now, I'll make my comment. I won't support the current motion. I don't think there's anything wrong with the policy that we have, because number three says that they may allow individuals. If you thought, if, if Ken thought it was a problem, he would have asked them to leave. And I, I think that we've had a knee-jerk reaction, reaction to a six-week petition drive that, you know, was six weeks long, and I think by making all these decisions, snap like that was not right. And if you need to have a committee to look at it, fine, but I think that our policy stands, and I think our policy has worked in years past. The driver's license people are going to be moving out soon, those are all Minnehaha County residents, they may be down there petitioning at that place instead of in front of our door, and I think by building and spending more taxpayer money, we don't even know for sure if it's a necessary thing, is, is kind of crazy. And I think that we should, this motion should fail, and we should just leave it as it is.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
I have a substitute motion.
Trying to make that substitute motion.
I would, I would move that, that the chair appoint a committee to study this issue and come back to the commission within ninety days with some possible solutions.
I have a motion, is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second with the amendment, and do you want to try to read that back?
Just a moment.
I want to make sure that we go ahead and speak to it, and we'll have to reread it.
His mo-
Go ahead, Cindy.
His motion is that the chair appoint a committee to study the issue and report back to the full commission in ninety days.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah. And I, we've got this on the table now, we're, we've got it out in the public in discussion, and, and I think this would be an opportunity to go through a lot of things, including an area, separate area, including whether or not that particular entrance is more accommodating than, say, for instance, the north entrance. I think that group would study all of that, and I certainly take, I'm certain they would take input from the rest of us commissioners, but, and work with Ken on developing either amendments to the policy or a new policy that would more reflect what the situation is today.
I do have one question.
Today being now.
Go ahead.
I want to know if Commissioner Kelly is substituting this motion for the one that he made last week?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think I seconded it if I did.
Yes, you did. Any other comments? I think we'll need to take a roll call vote on the amended-
On the substitute motion?
Substitute motion that Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Barth made, and I think we need to read it, just to be sure we know what we're voting on.
Okay, the substitute motion is for the chairman to appoint a committee to study the issue and report back in ninety days.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pecus?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes. So, we have a four-to-one approval to have me appoint a committee to address this and bring it back to you.
Don't mean to tell you how to do your job, but-
That's quite all right. To bring this back in ninety days, correct?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I, I'm not sure that it brings this particular part back. It brings back a plan for petition, access, outdoors, indoors, whatever, all of it.
Correct. It's much broader than, yeah.
So, I think we have our marching conversations. I'll have to think a little bit about how we're going to structure the committee, frankly, not having a immediate reaction on how that should work. The one question I do have, I think I would like to get the fire marshal involved in this conversation also.
Do we need a- Do we need a motion to, okay, I will make a motion that we leave the policy as presently written.
I'll second that.
That, that already is on the table.
That is on the table, and we need to do that next, correct?
Yes, that was my question.
Do you want to read that, please?
The motion on the table is to leave the petitioner's policy as it is currently written.
We have that motion on the table. Any more comments to that?
I don't know that that's necessary, that's my only question.
Well, I think for ninety days it is.
At a minimum, and, and I think that this also leaves the option, if we pass this, I, may I, Mr. Chair? The reason I seconded that motion is because I do think that there are some options that we have, if people want to be outside for inclement weather, for whatever reason, if we have a designated area that keeps them out of the wind, or the heat, or whatever it is, I think that would be prudent if they want to sit outside to the side and not block the, the doorways. The key, I think, here is accessibility, and if they want to be inside roving the halls, I don't have a problem with that either, but that's my own personal opinion. I do want to make sure that this is an option that is part of the ninety-day study.
Correct. Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
The, the only thing is, that right now, I amended my motion from the other day, which amended the current policy. That being said, the current policy is in effect, there's no change to the current policy. And, and I, I'll support her amendment, or her motion, but I, I, I don't think it's worth, necessary, simply because of, we have not amended the current motion. Uh, yeah, I'll defer to Kirsten.
I think I'd like a legal opinion.
I think no matter what you do, the current policy stays in place, but if you want to go on the record as to what your senses of the current policy until that future date, you're certainly able to bring a motion of that effect, so.
I think we're going to do that, since that's where we're at. All those in favor of the current amended policy? And if you'd read that one more time, please?
Well, the motion is to leave the policy as it is currently stated, not amended.
Yep.
Want a roll call vote?
Pardon? Yes, a roll call vote.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pecus?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes, it's unanimous to leave the policy as currently in place for at least the next ninety days, and we'll readdress it with a administrative committee. Thank you, ladies, for coming today, and, Mr. Litz, we appreciate your input, and hopefully we'll come to a reasonable solution in the next three months.
Item eighteen is an update and status report of the eighty-eighth legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County. Ken McSharland.
Commissioner Robert, I believe, is still on his way back from Lincoln, and so, I'm going to handle this part of the agenda. As you know, we're monitoring bills as they pop up during this session on those that impact Minnehaha County, and we've given you an updated list, and that's the most current list that we have, and that's your table. But I just wanted to touch base very, very quickly on a couple of them that we are monitoring. House Bill ten twenty, it's an act to revise certain provisions relating to the evaluation and treatment of persons with mental illness. This is a bill that I think will really help us, it really expands the use and the ability of the mobile crisis team to go into hospitals and other healthcare facilities, a provision that it doesn't have now, and it has passed health and house, health and human services. So, I think that's good for us. Leaving getting a lot of email attention on House Bill ten forty-five, and that deals with the, the rates of tax imposed on income over four hundred thousand for the bank franchise tax, and that, we're still looking at that bill. I'm not sure that it really does impact our potential collections that we get from the bank franchise tax all that much, but it certainly has generated a lot of thought in here and, and a lot of excitement. We are also, a new one that's popped up is House Bill ten seventy-six, and it's an act to repeal the requirements to publish certain information concerning county poor relief liens from the minutes of county commissioners. Right now, we publish the number of people receiving poor relief, the amounts paid, and the purposes of the expenditure, and this particular bill would remove that requirement, and that, that's scheduled for hearing today. One of the things that you see quite often on your agendas is, is the subject of House Bill ten eighty-five, it's an act to revise certain provisions regarding, concerning the notice given to municipalities and counties for bingo games and lotteries. In fact, you see those quite often on the county commission agenda. What this would do is to include, as part of the notification process, that either it goes to the governing board or the designated administrative body of the county. And so, I'm not sure it has real significant change there. If we got this, I'd probably still post them on the agenda anyway, as, as a notice. As you know, you don't act affirmatively on those applications anyway. We're also, all of the open meeting bills introduced by the governor, all those are really coming up for hearing this week. House Bill eleven oh eight, eleven oh nine, eleven ten, eleven thirteen, eleven fourteen, eleven fifteen. We've given, we've given you a brief synopsis of those bills, but all of those are up for discussion this week and have their hearings, and all of them in some way, shape, or form would impact something that we do down here. The other one I want, House, or Senate Bill thirty-eight, it's an act to increase the penalty for sexual acts between juvenile correction facility employees and detainees. This is a bill that did originate because of an incident here in Minnehaha County, just for, it, excuse me, it's raised this up to a class four felony, and it is already passed the Senate thirty-five and nothing, so its next stop is in the House. Here's a bill that I know is of interest to lots of counties, and that it doesn't particularly impact us at all, though, the Senate Bill eighty-six, it's an act to increase the minimum salary payable to county officials, states attorneys, and sheriffs, and that all of our elected officials are already paid more than the minimum salaries that are, or the salary amounts that are, are part of this particular bill. So, one other bill, Senate Bill eighty-eight, an act to authorize the county to deny bids on county sales of tax-deed properties if the bidder is not current on property taxes due. This is a bill that came right out of the association at the convention this past year. It was one that was introduced by Pennington County, and that, and it's scheduled for hearing tomorrow. This is a point of reference, our, the other association bill regarding the county's responsibility for costs incurred for crimes committed in state institutions, that is still going through a process of trying to obtain sponsors, and that, in order to be filed yet, and that, and so, that one's facing a tough hole, if I would be so bold as to say. So, we've got some challenges with that bill.
Questions for Ken?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
So, Ken, that Pennington County one, as I recall, people were buying these tax deeds and then never paying taxes on them, letting them go back to the county and then buying another property while they still, they never paid any taxes, they just churned properties without-
That was, that was certainly the information that was presented at the, at convention, that that was an issue.
Get rich quick, late night TV.
Any other questions for Ken? Thank you, Ken.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner liaison reports.
Does anyone have any liaison reports? I'll probably go to old business.
Old business.
Oh, and then-
I got one old business I have.
Commissioner Kelly?
Don't smile like that.
Technically, last week, I put a motion on the table, and then it was deferred, and I believe under Roberts' rules of order, because these ladies stayed here for an awful long time today, under Roberts' rules, that would be one of the first items to come up on, on a regular business agenda. And I guess I'm curious as to why that was way down the agenda instead of, I understand maybe Bob Sutton had a conflict there, but, but we did do several other things after that. It would seem to me that, that I, I think we should be, if an item is deferred from the previous week or not acted on for some reason, which I don't think would be the case for us, that it goes to the top of the schedule the following week when it's deferred to. And, Kirsten, am I correct on that?
Honestly, I've never had this issue come up before, so I would, I would have to look at the rules myself to see.
In the legislature, I know we wouldn't get to items, so we would just defer it to the next day, and then they would be the first items we'd work on the next day, in order, it would just would have been a lot fairer, I mean, they sat here for, what, an hour and a half or something, and people, I think, when they see that, and it triggers some public response, that we've got an obligation to, to accommodate them.
Thank you. I've never heard that, but we can do the research and find out if that's an issue. Commissioner Barth?
I just would have to say, I agree with Dick, and I, I've often seen contentious zoning issues that are late in the agenda, and you may have overflow crowd in the room, all parked in the parking lot, that if we could deal with them quicker on the agenda, then that room could get empty except for Pete over here.
And I think you'll have noticed on that thing, on that, on some of those contentious zoning things, particularly, those go out within a, a time- zoning things, particularly those go out within a time specified, and that, and so whether it's a drainage permit coming through that someone's appealing, or, or another zoning thing, when they send out notices, we work with Cindy, and we work with myself in planning to set the times for that to avoid that particular problem in the future. So we've already taken care of that.
I would remind the commissioners, if that's an issue for you, you can amend the agenda at the beginning of the meeting and change that instead of at the end of the meeting. So move forward from there. New business, any new business? The only thing that I would like to bring up just for a second is, there's the Sioux Falls Day at the legislature, which is February 12th, which is a Tuesday. I don't know if there's any interest of commissioners to go to that, or if there's anybody planning to do that, if we should defer or eliminate that particular meeting date for the commission. Commissioner McFarland?
I'll just say that typically, and that, you know, that, they've had something like that for a number of years, and typically, we've always had a county day at the legislature, and as you know, the association's kind of backed off of that and that, and so this would be really the only opportunity to go to the pier as part of an organized group from either Sioux Falls or Minnehaha County, or, you know, that kind of an association. So, in the past, it's never been an issue because we've always had our own, and now we don't.
That's why I brought it up. Thank you for bringing that. Do you have an interest in going on the 12th, or is that something that you're not going to do and want to do on your own? Don't everybody jump at once?
Well, I think it's a good idea. I mean, to give us the opportunity, but I don't know if anybody's going up, but it would make a difference.
Well, at this point, I guess we're not, probably not gonna do it, doesn't look like everybody's jumping up and down to go. We'll eliminate that. We do have an executive session for contract and legal issues that needs to be discussed, so we'll take-
Well, I guess I have, I have one item of new business.
I'm sorry, John.
And this is something that I read in the paper last week. You know, we were looking at Senate Bill 70, and we made the discussion about going from 180 days to 365 days for felons, and I expressed some concern over whether or not we may have a situation in Minnehaha County where suddenly 180 days flares into 365 days parking in our jail, filling it even faster than what Mike is able to deal with currently. And I know that there was a lot of discussion this last week in peer, especially at the committee meeting. I also read that Erin McGowan, our state's attorney, came out in favor of it, but I do want to remind our state's attorney, as well as our other department heads, that there is a cost to the 180 days being expanded to 365 days. And so I don't think this commission is 100% alleviated of all their concerns related to having extra time for felons to sit in our jail. And if I'm wrong, please let me know. I'm not saying they shouldn't go to the state pen.
I will tell you, and a number of you were at that particular meeting back in December when we discussed this with our area legislators as part of the joint city, county, school, district forum that we do at Leonardo's, and that, you know, the, the input that I gave is, I said, the commission is generally supportive of these ideas and this process that's going here. I mean, it's something we've engaged with, with JDAI, but the one thing I wanted the legislators to remember, and that, and I've shared this comment with other folks, and, you know, as your position, we could feel a lot better about this and a lot less nervous if we weren't full already.
Right.
And that, so, because we're full.
Thank you, Ken. And John, I apologize for-
No, it's fine, it just kinda popped in my head.
Okay.
I want to make sure that we're saying, we're giving a clear message, and not a mixed message.
That's-
Because mixed messages in peer work against us.
That's a good point. Again, we'll have an executive session for contract and legal issues. We have a motion-
Purposes contract and-
Second.
And a second to go into executive session. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimous?